Welcome to the December 21st meeting of the Oceanside City Council. First meeting with our new council members. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight we have Pastor Morris L. Woods from the Friendly Church of God in Christ. Thank you Pastor Woods.
Thank you Mayor Sanchez and to the City Council. With bowed heads, oh Lord our Lord, how excellent is your name in all the earth. Your right hand and your holy arm have gotten you the victory. Your glory is above the heavens. Out of the mouths of babes and suckling you ordained strength because of your enemies, that you might steal the enemy and the avenger. Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us. We thank you, oh God, for this City Council, the mayor, the city of Oceanside. And Father, as we often pray for them, we pray, oh God, that you watch over them and lead and guide them in their decisions that they have to make, oh God. Father, we pray for our state, we pray for our country, in the name of Jesus, oh Lord. And we just thank you tonight. We pray, oh God, for all of your blessings upon these, your servants, because according to your word, you have made them your servants to bring order, oh God, where there would be chaos. And we thank you for it all. In the mighty and the precious name of Jesus, we thank God. Amen and amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. And tonight we have our service employee awards, recognition awards. And Jenny's going to come up and help me with this. Thank you Jenny.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Jenny Abara, Human Resource Technician. This evening I have the honor and pleasure presenting to you, our staff, and the members of the public here tonight, those employees who have reached the noteworthy accomplishment of 20 or more years of the service with the city of Oceanside. As we have done recently, I will ask the respective department head or supervisor to join Mayor Sanchez to help provide each award to tonight's recipient. At this time, I would ask that the Code Enforcement Division Manager Kirk Munt, please come forward to present our first award.
Hi Kirk.
Really excited about this one.
The first employee to be recognized is from Code Enforcement, Jackie Bickford.
All right Jackie, 20 years.
Jackie began working with the city in October 2002 as an office specialist in our finance department. In April of 2005, she moved into the role of Business License Inspector. Jackie currently serves the city in a code enforcement role since September 2018. Please join me in congratulating Jackie for 20 years of service to our community.
I want to give you a hand. Thank you so much for everything that you've done.
We get a picture here. This girl is on fire. Okay, I hope that the cameras caught that.
Our next award recipient is being recognized from our Neighborhood Services. Is Leilani Hines available? We have Myrna Arivalo. Myrna began her career in November 2002 as an office specialist. She became a housing technician in November 2002. And in 2013, she became a housing, I'm sorry, housing technician in November 2002 and in 2013, a housing specialist, where she continues to serve the city today. Please congratulate Myrna on her 20 years of service. Thank you Myrna. The next two recipients being recognized are from our police department. Chief Armijo, will you please come forward to present them? Damon Smith. Damon launched his career with the city of Oceanside Police Department in September 2002. Damon served the community as a police officer until October of this year, when he was promoted to police sergeant. Please join me in congratulating Damon for 20 years of service to our community.
Now, did you have anybody that you wanted to come up and have a picture with you?
No, I'm good enough with you.
Okay, all right, all right. I forgot to ask that question.
Thank you Damon. The next employee is being recognized for 25 years of service, also in the police department, Jennifer began working with the city in November 1997 as a police records technician. In February of 2006, she moved into the role of police records supervisor, where she continues to serve today. Please congratulate Jennifer in her 25 years of service. That concludes tonight's service awards. On behalf of the city of Oceanside, congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. Big applause for all of them. Thank you. Are we have a closed session report?
Thank you. The City Council met in closed session at 3:30. There was no meeting on Item 1. Item 2A, conference with real property negotiator involving the property located at 4925 Oceanside Boulevard. Negotiating parties are the city of Oceanside and Hobie Cat Company. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the real property. Item 2B was a conference with real property negotiator involving the 2.24 acres of land located at 3141 Oceanside Boulevard. The negotiating parties are the city of Oceanside and Alta Loma Creekside Property LLC. Under negotiations are price and terms for the acquisition of the property. There is no information that's required to be disclosed under the Brown Act on Items 2A and B at this time.
Thank you. We're on consent calendar items. These are Items 4 through 22. And a request from the dais to pull.
20.
20? 13 was that? And I'd like to pull 5 and 15. Motion for balance, to approve balance?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote. I forgot to ask you if there's any requests from the public to pull.
Yes, there is, but Councilmember Robinson pulled that item as well.
Okay, great.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. First one up is actually Item 5. And this has to do with the city clerk's minutes from our last meeting. And Item number 30 of that last meeting had to do with revising the inclusionary housing regulations and adoption of a resolution setting a new in lieu fee. And I, it was at the end of the night and I was recovering from the flu and so I accidentally voted yes. I really meant to vote no. So I'd like to have the minutes reflect that my intent was to vote no. I didn't even know that I hadn't voted no. Several people had to tell me, you voted yes. It's like, no I didn't. So, you know, that was something, I think if you were there for the hearing, you would have known that no would have been my vote. So I'd like to do that. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and with that addition, move approval of that item.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item 13 is approval of a two-year professional services agreement with Gatekeepers Security Services, Inc. for a total contract amount of $210,960 for security services at the Oceanside Harbor and authorization for the administrative officer to execute the agreement. And this was pulled by Councilmember Joyce, right? Councilmember Joyce? Do we have somebody here to address any questions he may have from staff?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, we have our Public Works Director. Our Carver Master is out today, but we have our Public Works Director. And then I'm also available to answer some questions because I am familiar with the contract request.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Joyce?
Yes, so I pulled this item because I've heard significant feedback from the community about the Gatekeepers' conduct in the downtown area. And I've also heard, we've also received positive comeback, comment from business owners downtown too. But the overwhelming voice that I keep hearing is that the conduct is concerning. And so at this time, us taking on a two-year contract with Gatekeepers is not something that I'd be in support of.
All right. Did you have any questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion? There's a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Joyce, no.
Thank you. Item number 15, this is my request to pull mostly for the presentation. And that is approval of a professional services agreement with Chandler Asset Management, Inc. to provide investment management services for the city's $500 million investment portfolio, appropriation of funds to the investment clearing fund, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. This is the first time that the city is going out contract because they were unable to. After going out for, to see if we could hire a replacement, that unfortunately, we could not find someone. And so staff then went out to see if we could contract out. In the staff report, my concerns had more to do with checks and balances from the city's point of view. I think I tried getting that across to Mr. Mullin. And I wanted to make sure, one of the things that is being proposed is that we eliminate the Simpro and the Bloomberg software. And I wanted to ask staff, what are the checks and balances internally? We will be getting reports from a third party. How do we ensure that those reports are accurate? What are we going to do to be able to ensure that we know exactly how our investment is doing?
Sure.
Without those tools.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Jill Moya, Financial Services Director. Thank you for your question, Mayor. We, the city will still have logins into our custodial account. So we still have access into our custodial account with the Bank of New York Mellon. And we'll be able to see whenever we want to log in, what the balance is, what are, what all of our investments are within our portfolio. In addition to that, Chandler will be providing us with a portal where we can log in and see what that total balance is. So we could always reconcile the two, make sure that those balances agree. That's also something that we do monthly, where we look at our bank statement and make sure that, or the investment statement and to make sure that that agrees to our accounting system. And that's just one of our normal processes that we do and will continue to do. We will also be receiving monthly and quarterly reports from Chandler, which will show all of our investments and our tradings for that period where we can, just like we have been receiving through our Simpro system. And we can review that activity to ensure that we're in compliance with our investment policy. And Chandler also has a compliance software that they use called Bloomberg AIM. So this will be an addition. So these are additional controls that we don't currently have. They use a certain compliance software to ensure that we're in compliance with California code and our city investment policy as well. So we, there are other enhancements to the controls now with Chandler that we'll be able to have a little bit more systems in place to ensure compliance and insight into our, all of our trades and our balances.
Okay, so you did mention that this contract will allow you to have access to a portal. So you'll be able to have, would that be just you or will there be other employees that'll be able to have access to this portal?
Oh, we, our elected treasurer will have access. And that is how we then are able to see the daily cash balance and any trades that are made, as well as all treasury staff and myself.
And you did mention several other ways sounded like also kind of portal type, that you'll be able to have access to via Chandler. So in other words, you are going to have full access. This is not something like we just get a report and that's it. Trust us.
Right, no. We have full access into our custodial account that actually holds all of our investments. Just, we always have and we will continue to have access to that. Chandler's essentially, we're just giving them access as well to that account in order for them to do the trades. But we aren't giving up any of the access that we currently have or have had in the past.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, for, number one, and I am not going to say that I'm an expert in this at all. These are questions from, you know, from me and ensuring that the public understands that we have internal checks and balances. We're not just going to say, okay, third party, you know, we want you to do this and by the way, give us a report every now and then, you know? There is going to be very close working together and we will have, the city will have access to portals, to the information directly.
Correct.
And, yes, okay. So I wanted also to assure the public that this is happening. This is the first time in how many years?
Ever here in the city of Oceanside.
Right. That we are actually contracting with a third party. So thank you very much for that. I'm going to go ahead and move.
Mayor Sanchez?
Yes.
Our city treasurer requested to make some comments on this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Roy?
Thank you Ms. Moya for that presentation. Today is an historic milestone for the city of Oceanside with the hiring of Chandler Asset Management of San Diego, a California-based company, who will take over the advisory and investing for our city's $500 million investment portfolio. This represents a major shift from internal control within the city to an external independent control by a management company. We have had until now, as was a one-person city staffer, treasury manager, only one person with access to our $500 million portfolio, and this really was not prudent. The treasury manager was responsible for making the day-to-day critical decisions based on ever-changing market conditions as to how to invest, when to invest, what to invest in, and writing regular monthly reports encompassing all of it. One city person was responsible to keep us in government compliance while continuing to maintain a balanced investment portfolio. During my tenure as your elected city treasurer since 2018, I oversaw two different treasury managers who each had their very own and very different investing styles from each other. And market conditions drastically changed in this transition when COVID-19 officially hit us in March of 2020. Now we will move forward into a new era with an independent professional asset management company who has teams of professionals to make these day-to-day decisions. Thus, it will no longer just be one person. This is a far better solution to our city's investment needs, especially considering that we have a $500 million investment portfolio. This will give our city a much better range and flexibility. This will continue to ensure safety and liquidity while optimizing investment returns. As city treasurer, I will be monitoring all the Chandler actions daily. Chandler in turn has pledged to work hand-in-hand with us to meet all of our needs. For example, Chandler team members assigned to Oceanside's investments will make regular appearances and provide reports, updated reports at our Citizen Investment Oversight Committee quarterly meetings, as well as provide monthly reports for our city council. This is a win-win for our city of Oceanside. I have met Chandler representatives at the California Municipal Treasurers Association annual conferences, which I have regularly attended since I was elected in 2018. I know them, I like them, I trust them. They are well-regarded in the industry. They rose to the top of our selection process. We had 10 companies apply. We had a vigorous process to whittle this down to the top three and then to the final, the final three got to be interviewed each. And our selection was unanimous among us that were on that panel, that Chandler was the best fit for Oceanside. I'm in full agreement with the selection of Chandler. As your city treasurer, I thank our city staff members who were involved and instrumental in the selection process along with me. And that's namely our financial services director, Jill Moya, and our assistant city attorney, assistant city manager, Michael Gossman. I appreciated their time and dedication to this very important work done on behalf of the citizens of Oceanside and our city government. As your elected city treasurer, I continue to faithfully perform all of my duties. I continue to faithfully uphold and maintain the integrity of the office of the city treasurer. And I assure you and the public that our investment portfolio is safe and protected. The Citizens Investment Oversight Committee continues to do its due diligence and along with me, we are the public watchdogs. As your city treasurer and on behalf of the Treasury Division staff, I wish everyone a happy holiday season, a Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. And I would like to bring up the, one of the Chandler representatives who is here tonight, and that is Mia. Mia, if you would, please come up. And if you would introduce yourself, please.
Yes, of course. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, and residents. I'm here tonight representing Chandler Asset Management. I've been an employee there for almost two decades now, but I want to affirm to you and share that I'm also a resident of our own city of Oceanside. And I very much look forward to working closely with you, with Jill, the finance staff, and Mr. Roy, in assuring that we not only protect the city's investment portfolio, but we work to effectively optimize the portfolio and always ensure safety and liquidity. So thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you. What was your last name again? Your full name?
Mia Correll Brown.
Thank you. It's wonderful to put a face to the name, the title, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you Mia.
Are there any other requests to speak, are there any requests to speak from the public?
There are no requests from the public on this item.
Okay, to the dais then. Deputy Mayor Keim.
Thank you, Mr. Roy, for attending tonight's meeting. And I would like to move approval.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that.
Thank you.
Let's vote. Thank you for coming. Really appreciate that. Item number 20 is approval and adoption of a resolution implementing the revised Personnel Rules and Regulations dated December 21st, 2022. Who was it that? Okay.
Thank you Mayor.
I mean.
I think all of us.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, sorry. I think all of us received an email from a citizen that had read the PSNR, the rules and regs, and a commander on that, but she found a little glitch in the, I think it's a glitch in the, for veterans credits. And it's, if you want to see it, it's on page 16, 4.8.1. And it just has a 10-year limit that they can get those veterans' points. And there's really no legal reason we have to have that in there. And I understand that our city manager checked with staff and they're willing to take that out. So I would move Item 20 for approval with that change in Section 4.8.1 to remove the 10-year limit.
I'll second that. Is that what staff has agreed to do?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, we did look into the request and I too thank the resident for catching that. And after consulting our human resources staff, we are totally supportive of removing that limit.
All right, thank you.
We do have public on this item.
Pardon?
We do have public sign up to speak on this item.
Oh, okay. We have requests from the public to speak on this item?
Janet Bachelor?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Robinson, for pulling that item. I was, I was curious why there was a 10-year limit on veterans' preference. Being a Marine Corps vet myself, that struck me as, what happens to that veteran that applies and he's been out of the service for 12 years? To me, that didn't quite seem fair. So I just want to thank you for pulling that item and thank you for approving it.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak?
All the requests we have from the public.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. On to general items. Item number 23, approval of the addition of an assistant police chief, police lieutenant, and police sergeant positions and fiscal year 2022, 2023, funding up to $805,313 for salary and benefits to be paid by converting vacant police officer positions. And tonight we have report by Chief Armijo.
Thank you Mayor. Good evening Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm here tonight asking for your approval to add an assistant police chief, one police lieutenant, one police sergeant, and fiscal year 22, 23, funding up to $805,000 for salary and benefits to be paid for by converting vacant police officer positions. My presentation will be divided into three major areas, historical context and need, staff distribution and responsibilities, and a funding plan. Historical context and need. In 1992, 30 years ago, we had a chief and three captains for a department that included 246 budgeted employees in a city population of nearly 130,000. Today, we still have a chief and three captains for a department that now includes 323, that's 77 more, budgeted full-time employees, and nearly 45,000 more residents. The complexities and expectations of law enforcement 30 years ago are no match for those of today. 24/7 connectedness did not exist back then, nor did we have a police and fire commission or the pending, standing oversight committee. In order to maintain the level of community connectedness necessary as a chief of police, while also interfacing with staff to push forward needed change, executive-level assistance is necessary and quite frankly, long overdue. Staff distribution and responsibilities. The vast majority of community complaints that we receive, especially those sent directly to City Council, involve quality of life concerns related to traffic and homeless. The existing structure of our Support Operations Division includes most of the workings that are on the front lines of addressing quality of life issues. These units include our homeless outreach team, traffic investigation. These units include our homeless outreach team, traffic investigators, our motor unit, our neighborhood policing team, our psychiatric emergency response team, our school safety enhancement team, our crime suppression team, and our harbor and beaches unit. However, Support Operations is also responsible for critical organizational units such as financial services, training, media relations, backgrounds, and hiring. A major benefit of an Assistant Chief position is that I will be able to take these critical administrative functions out of Support Operations and place them within an expanded chief's office where they belong. Doing so will allow for the Support Operations captain to be solely focused on operations. Since 2014, the police department has implemented a more robust use-of-force reporting and review process. We've seen an increase in demand for accountability and transparency. We've significantly increased training that takes place throughout each year. We now have an oversight process that will soon begin their work. Other legislative changes have also taken place that create additional administrative processes, such as the state of California's Racial and Identity Profiling Act, as well as Assembly Bill 481, which was the use of military equipment by law enforcement. Under this proposal, an expanded office of the chief of police will now include financial services, training, media relations, backgrounds and hiring, and professional standards. An Assistant Chief will aid in directing all these elements, assist with chief-level community outreach, and provide additional capacity for internal staff interaction and outreach. In prior years, some misconduct investigations were assigned to subject member supervisors. Due to increasing demands placed on frontline supervisors, this practice was ended approximately two years ago, and now the responsibility for complaint investigations has been centralized within our professional standards unit. While this is a much better practice, the capacity of a single sergeant has been far exceeded and has resulted in the professional standards lieutenant having to share more investigative responsibility. In addition, we do anticipate the need for a staff liaison to support the work of the Standing Oversight Committee. By adding this second sergeant to the professional standards unit and eliminating the training and backgrounds and hiring responsibilities of the professional standards lieutenants, we will be properly staffed to handle misconduct investigations, use-of-force reviews and investigations, audits, and be better positioned to support the Standing Oversight Committee. Under this plan, the newly created police lieutenant position will assume responsibilities for the department's training program, hiring, and backgrounds. Our funding plan, so this, this is funded by the use of three fully-funded vacant police officer positions. They will be converted to create these three new positions. Three additional fully-funded positions that were vacated in this fiscal year will be downgraded in pay step to provide the additional funding to pay for this program. The total funding needed for salary and benefits is just over $805,000, and the total funding being made available through the conversion and downgrade is just under $807,000. I'm not asking for additional general fund support. I want to add some contextual information with regard to management to staff ratios. I'm aware of concerns under this plan that our department may be considered too top-heavy and that will be taking officers off the street, and this isn't the case. Management rates include lieutenant, captain, assistant chief, and chief. Although I would argue that it is never a true apples-to-apples comparison, we are often compared to our neighboring police departments. So, for example, Carlsbad PD has one management position for every 8.6 officers. Escondido PD has one management position for every 11.5 officers. We presently have one management position for every 14.4 officers, and if this plan is approved, we'll have one management position for every 12.3 officers and still have a higher ratio than our two closest police department neighbors. With respect to taking officers off the street, this true, this too is not the case. The timing of this proposal coincides with the timing of new officers completing their field training and being ready for solo-duty status. So, this plan is neutral in terms of taking officers off the street. Additionally, we have three more officers on track to be field-deployable by the end of March, with another three by the beginning of May. This matter did receive unanimous endorsement from the Police and Fire Commission back in November, and I know we have at least one member of the commission here with us this evening. It has also been supported by the Oceanside Police Officers Association, and several board members are also present this evening. So, this concludes my, my presentation, and to reiterate, I'm asking for your approval to add an Assistant Chief, one Lieutenant, one Sergeant, and for fiscal year 22, 23, funding up to $805,000 for salary and benefits to be paid for by converting the police officer positions, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have no requests from the public on this item.
Okay, then, do we have any motions?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I did get a chance to meet with Chief and, and also with Mr. Borrego. I've, I've been here for a while, and especially during a time when we, and this is back in 2000 when I first ran, one of the main reasons that I ran for office was because we had a pretty high crime rate, and this is through the 90s. Thank you, Chief. I don't think I'll have other questions for you. But bottom line is, we had low pay, our officers were paid pretty low. I was at the Public Defender's Office, and I know the, you know, what was going on in the court, courtrooms, and there was a lot of crime in the neighborhoods. It was, it was high. There were a lot of homicides that were going on, and the, the first thing that I did was push really, really hard for higher salaries. In fact, we ended up being number one in the county. Because we did have a revolving door thing where, because of the salaries that were so low, people, officers, we had candidates would apply, and then, once they were trained, they would leave, and so we did not have consistency. Certainly, we didn't have, you know, a trust in, in the police department. I will say that after a lot of violence that happened in the early 2000s, including the killing of two police officers in line of duty, the city of Oceanside moved rather swiftly into the community policing model, which I believed needed to happen. We needed to have better community police relations. At the time, we were, we had just gotten a new chief, Frank McCoy, and he was totally committed, and what he had said to me was, "You don't just assign a few, a few officers to community policing. Every single officer will be a community police officer, and that's how you, you get, you know, that full kind of implementation of community policing." I want to say that the program was, I think, successful. A lot of things could have happened during the investigation, in the investigation of Officer Besant's, the homicide of Officer Besant, and, in fact, our police department did an excellent investigation, very professional, and we were able to get through the process and make sure that those who were responsible were, were charged and, and were, and went through the process. I want to say that community policing is something that I have come to love and really just, you know, support in a very, very big way, and I noticed around 2000, I want to say 14, 15, that things were starting to change, and we were, and that was because of several things. Number one, our city's population would grow during the summer, of course, because we were being so successful at being a tourist, a destination city, we were having a lot of tourism, and of course, you have to maintain the public safety of, of our visitors, and so the first thing that started to happen is during the summertime, when we especially needed a good community policing in, in the, at-risk neighborhoods, it wasn't happening, and I was, you know, I just did not anticipate that issue. Otherwise, I would have asked for, you know, a higher, higher number of police officers. We have a situation, and I understand, that it's not just the city of Oceanside, or not just regionally, but nationwide, that we're having less and less people considering a career in policing, and so we are having to compete for a pool that is getting smaller and smaller, and I congratulate the chief on the program that we have for recruitment of police officers, including going to the, being in the high schools. I unfortunately have a difficult time voting yes on this, because to me, getting rid of these positions and downgrading is not consistent with what I wanted to see, and that is that we continue to do everything possible to fill these positions. So, that is the concern that I have, especially at this time, when we, when we are seeing spikes in crime, spikes in violence and homicides, and it's very difficult for me to, to see this going on around me, to see response times. I just learned today of a response time that was about two hours on an ongoing crime. The ratios, I'm concerned about the patrol, you know, the, the ratios. We, we need to increase that. How we do that, I know there's a lot of creative ideas that the chief has come forward with, and we've supported him 1,000%. We just need to do this. Plus, above and beyond that, when we started having homeless issues, we started adding to the responsibilities of OPD officers with respect to a homeless outreach team, you know, and other, other things. So, what I'd like to see out of this, and I know it's not that I don't support OPD, I, I support OPD 1,000%, my concern is, you know, there, there is going to be a public perception that we are not going after more officers. That is, you know, it's, it's, it is what it is, right? And for me, at some point, we're going to have to put that money back in the budget. So, while we say right now it's, it's neutral, you know, in the long run, it isn't going to be neutral, and we're going to have to, you know, go back, revisit this, because I certainly am going to want to revisit this and ensure that we have more and more officers on the street. But I do want to see that we look at how to take some of these functions off OPD that have to do with working with our homeless and put it maybe more like Neighborhood Services Department or somewhere. Look, look at how other cities are doing this, because the most expensive way of doing it is saying, "Yes, OPD, you know, you're just going to do this." First of all, it's adding to an already heavy load, and secondly, that may not be the best way of handling this. There, there may be a, you know, it'll be cheaper certainly to hire civilians. How do we do this? So, I'm, I'm looking forward, I talked to John, Mr. Borrego, our city attorney, our city manager about this, and I am hoping that we are going to be looking at this and seeing how we can reduce that kind of load on our officers. They need to be on the streets, and, you know, coming to, I mean, I, I don't want to ever have anyone say that because someone didn't respond within, what do we have, a five-minute, six-minute response time goal? And sometimes, it's just impossible to be there within even 10 minutes, right? I don't want anyone to ever say a life could have been spared but for a long response time. I know in the past, response times have been extremely, extremely critical, and we have been, in fact, criticized for the response times. This is, response time is a very, very important to quality of life in terms of police and, and fire. So, I, I know that those are very, very important. I want to say that I would not want to, I probably would be approving this if this was an addition to, is what I'm saying. I don't want to see a reduction of the number of positions. I'm not convinced that that is, especially since we have gotten bigger, especially during the summer. So, didn't mean to speak so much. Councilmember Keim.
Just to address a couple issues. I do agree with the mayor, we have a shortage of officers across the country. It's very unfortunate. One of the things that I've seen, and it's, it's a challenge, I think every city or sheriff's department is facing, is this rush to judgment by politicians and leaders to blame officers for every issue they face without looking at all the facts. It has had a terrible effect on recruiting and retention. However, we've addressed that in the city, I think, more effectively than many other cities. I, I've had the opportunity to work with multiple police departments in the county and the sheriff's department, and I do think we have the best department. And there's three things that I believe that really make a successful law enforcement organization. First, you have to hire the best people. Second, you have to provide the best training and equipment. And third, which is what we're doing today, you have to have the best frontline supervision and culture. And that's how, if you have an officer that's causing problems and not doing their job well, that's how you find that out. If you have supervisors that are overburdened and have too many officers to supervise, they don't have the time to really focus on each officer and making sure that we have the very best. And I think tonight, the chief has brought forward a, a very effective plan that's going to put our department in a position to be successful and to make sure we're holding our officers accountable and what they're supposed to do in the community. And I think, and I, maybe a couple of questions for the chief. In our, in the county right now, especially with what we've done with recruiting and retention, I know we've been a great draw for other departments. Where would you put us in the recruiting and retention challenge? Where would you rank us in the city? Because I know San Diego PD is hemorrhaging officers, and we're actually gaining some recently. Is that, is that accurate?
In the last year, we gained four to five officers who, who left San Diego PD. Out of the lateral hiring incentive program that you approved about a year ago, we've hired 11 from different police departments out of the 15 that we were authorized, so we still have a little bit of room to, to work on getting up to that, that 15. Every agency's struggling, and part of the, what we learned is, is, you know, there's an attraction to OPD based on the family environment we have within the organization and, and the, the leadership that exists, but everybody's struggling.
Do you, do these supervisory positions that you're adding, will they allow us to be more effective at recruiting and retention going forward?
Well, within the, what would be the expanded chief's office, right now, the lieutenant who oversees our, our hiring and background and recruiting process doubles as our professional standards lieutenant unit, which means that he's carrying an investigative workload and has to take on priority cases, and so he, he benefits from having great quality staff that work directly for him, but he's not as engaged as he otherwise could be simply due to capacity. Under this plan, those two functions are completely separated, so at that middle management area, we will have somebody more focused to develop, you know, strategic ideas that we can leverage to improve our recruiting efforts.
I think this addition, and this is, this isn't a, a zero-sum game. We can add these now, and then if we get to the point where we're fully staffed, I am very supportive of it, I, I think the mayor is too, listening to comments tonight, to increasing a budget, if we can actually fill those line-level officer spots, but I think this is a good first step on creating that environment, continuing our success with recruiting and retention, and continuing to have our police department the very best in the county. So, I wholeheartedly support this, and I'd like to vote.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm just going to echo probably a little bit of what Deputy Mayor Keim said, but, and I agree with you, community policing was a good program, but my experience with public safety programs, they all evolve, and they go through changes, and as, as important as community policing is, what I think's more important is having our police part of our community, and when we can attract officers, and I do believe that good management attracts officers, I believe that is a truism, and I think this is a creative and collaborative approach. The chief has explained that, and so I would just encourage everybody's support. Thank you.
Councilmember Joyce?
I have a few things to say about this one. First is, on first, on first read, I definitely had concerns about adding additional expenditures to the budget in the, in this area, specifically when it looks like we're taking officers off the street, and call times are definitely a concern in the community. So... So when you, so one thing is that I would have preferred that this came after the large organizational study that we are conducting. I feel like the data that would have come back could have helped justify this move. Not that you didn't present a very thorough presentation as it was, chief, and I appreciate all the information that you did present. The other thing is that, again, just the response time is a big deal, and thinking about anything we can do to reduce the response time is really important. So, that being said, during our conversations, what stuck out the most about this move is that it is essential that we properly comply with the new legislation, and that these positions will specifically help us do that in a better way, which increases transparency for the community. And at that, at that change, at that step up in our abilities to be a better public-facing entity, that makes a lot of sense to me in this move. The other thing is, I spoke with the chief, I spoke with members of the Police and Fire Commission, who are willing to be critical of moves that we are proposing, and it did receive unanimous support. It also had support from all of the, from the labor partners as well, which is a big deal. So because of those things, I am going to be supporting this tonight.
Mr. Borrego, did you have anything else to add?
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, I had nothing else to add.
Okay, because your light was on. All right. I do have a question, though, for Mr. Borrego. Mr. Borrego, can we bring this back in a year or two years to replace those positions? Because that is what I want. I do not want to let that go.
Honorable mayor and councilmember, certainly as part of our budget preparation process, if we get direction from council to look at adding positions, we would certainly support that.
Would that also be something that's going to be looked at in that organizational study, our number of officers per citizenry?
I believe that's part of the scope. I would defer to the chief on that specific question, however.
That is part of it, but I think what you'll end up seeing from the consultant is, the trend is to shy away from doing a simple, trying to come up with a standard ratio of, you know, officers per capita, and tailor it more to the needs of the individual communities that the department is serving. That seemed to be more of a trend these days through these analyses.
Our citizens experience a different reality than, say, Carlsbad or Rochester, if any.
Absolutely. I think we've, you know, we've had discussions about just the socioeconomic differences and how huge those impacts are on crime.
As a follow-up to my earlier statement, I will add, and obviously, the city council's aware of this, but very shortly, we will be working on our upcoming budget for the next fiscal year, and as part of that, we also present our five-year financial outlook. So if council wants us to look at perhaps funding positions down the road out in later years, then we can certainly have those discussions, as we will be engaging council very shortly in terms of our five-year financial forecast, and that would certainly help inform that conversation.
Thank you. Just a week, just about a week ago, was this homicide in my neighborhood where this gentleman was in the light of day, defacing, graffitiing not just one building, not just two buildings, three buildings, on top of driving a car recklessly. And I, you know, but for, I think, having a community police officer there, there would, he would not have been killed. There's just so much that happens, you know, that depends on a quick response, when something like that, in the light of day, in front of kids, in front of city staff, that this goes on, and that it happens on a very busy street, where he was driving recklessly, could have killed kids, adults. And so that's why I will be pushing very hard to replace these. So I will support this, but I am going to be pushing very hard to make sure, because I cannot see this as a, you know, as a net. This, we have to maintain, we have to maintain our police presence, our patrol presence, not just, you know, admin. Admin won't help us in the neighborhoods. Deputy Mayor Kine.
It's okay, we can vote.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Do we have public communications on off-agenda items? Item number 24? No, excuse me, item 25?
Under item 25, we have three speakers registered to speak.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Rose Higuera, to be followed by Diane Wolke, to be followed by Katie Taylor.
So I would like to address an incident that happened at Dia de los Muertos. I was there with some associates, and we had three candidate signs up, one for Corey Jensen, one for Emily Witchman, and one for Ally Manal. And we had these signs on a ladder next to Emily's car. Emily had a display for Dia de los Muertos. And mayor, one of your associates came up, and she told her, in a very nasally tone, "This is not a political event, and you need to take those down." And so Emily said, "Okay, I can take them down," in her sweet voice, "but no, your associate came and ripped them off of our ladder. Last I understood, it's illegal to do that, to remove political signs that do not belong to you." She confiscated them, took them to the office. And later, Emily and Ally went to the office to go retrieve their signs, and then they were met by you, Ms. Mayor Sanchez. And I understand that you told Emily, "I will believe her before I'll believe you," and you gave back the signs. And you would not allow them to put the signs and display the signs, and then, a little further down the street, you allowed Mike Levin to have a platform. And you also allowed Eric Joyce to speak. So that, to me, shows a lot of disrespect to citizens that are here in the city, trying to do good, trying to run for office, trying to exercise their civil liberties, and also hypocrisy, because you did allow Eric Joyce and Mike Levin to have a whole platform down the street from us. So I would just like to remind you, mayor, that you are elected by the people, for the people, and you are accountable to us. And we need a leader here in Oceanside that is a person of character and integrity, and so we're hoping that you can be that person for us. And I do hope for an apology for these three ladies. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and at this time, I will take a point of personal privilege. Apparently, there was something that happened earlier that I was not aware of, but I was standing next to the organizers of Dia de los Muertos, which is some folks from Main Street, Oceanside, who were trying to explain to some candidates that they could not have their signs within the area of the event, but certainly right outside the event. So that is what I witnessed. I made no such comments, other than to suggest to Emily that, "It's fine, it's fine, you can do it right outside." That's all I said. I did not want to get involved, other than, you know, there's just no politicking in an event that way. They could have allowed a table, apparently, they decided not to allow any tables whatsoever within the event. But certainly, in the Civic Center, I think that's what it was said, "Go to the Civic Center, you can be there, that's right outside of the event." Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, councilmembers, newly-elected councilmembers. I'm Diane Wolke, District 2, Arrowood. I'd like to speak to you tonight about some ongoing issues that many of us have been having with our Parks and Rec Commission. I recently requested a complaint form from our elected clerk, and was told that they're available on the third floor, come down and get one. They're not available online. There, I managed to pull the last one this evening as I streaked into the meeting. It's only in English. This is not a monolingual city that we live in. I would argue that that needs to be corrected as well as posted online. I'll do my part. I'd like to see the city also do their part with posting this complaint form online. I'd also like to speak to the lack of equity going on with the commission meetings. It's one thing to have the city council meeting at 5:00 PM, when people who are working, who are disabled, who have transportation issues, who maybe are immune-compromised, cannot attend in person, but we also have issues with the Parks and Rec Commission meetings not being posted to the public. I was told by the clerk that, "Well, we're meeting the letter of the law here," but in fact, it's not meeting the same letter as the city council meeting notices, nor the other committee or commission meeting notices. They're hidden, they're not posted. I received, as well as many other people, received notification of the last commission meeting, the day after the meeting was held, not of benefit. You're expecting people, in essence, to be able to remember to plug into their calendars on a monthly basis to look for those minutes, and the staff, the agenda and the staff reports, and many people in this city do not have access to computers and the internet. So this is a serious equity issue, serious equity issue. I frequently have opportunity to speak, not only within California, but across the country in myriad meetings, as a board member of Safe, Healthy Playing Fields. Nowhere else are we locked out of being able to speak remotely, never. This is also an equity issue for us, and I don't see why this cannot be corrected as well. Just very quickly, yes, I agree with the call times. I recently had an issue in Arrowood where we had an hour and 20-minute response for a serious, ongoing domestic violence issue. I also had a neighbor who had a 13-minute response when she was found unconscious in her home. So if you live in the northeast end of the city, you may as well buy a defibrillator and stay at home, you'll probably have better chances if you have a heart attack or a stroke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Taylor.
Good evening, city council. I'm here tonight to talk to you about inflation. Inflation is hitting all sectors. Oceanside cannot print money the way the federal government does. At the next city council meeting, I'm requesting the city manager, finance director, and treasurer provide a financial status update. California, in case you didn't know, leads the way if foreclosure starts. People go into foreclosure, guess what? They don't pay property taxes. Foreclosures are up 64% nationwide. What is your plan with the city of Oceanside to cut the budget if revenue drops? That's just one area. This is especially important, because now we have big spending Eric Joyce on the city council. Eric did his part in leading the way to drive the Oceanside School Board into bankruptcy, which was only saved and stopped because the school board stole property to a developer. That's the only reason they weren't taken over by the San Diego Office of Education. So here's my request. Based on Oceanside's current budget, what are the projected deficits? Have any areas been identified to reduce, cut expenses at least 10%, excluding police and fire? Has Oceanside had to use funds in the last three months, reserve funds, to meet expenses? Has Oceanside's tax revenue in the last quarter of 2022, what is it compared to the last quarter of 2019? And I can tell you, I am so upset about this. I lived through the market crash of 2008, and I see blind city councils everywhere not recognizing what's coming down the pike and not being prepared for it. If you need somebody at the red pen, I'll be happy to sit down with you and help you do the budget.
Thank you. No other requests to speak.
That concludes the off-agenda comments.
Thank you.
I'll just take a brief point of personal privilege.
Yes, councilmember Joyce.
When I left the Oceanside Unified School District, we were, I left with a balanced budget for the first time in three years.
Thank you. Item number 27 is adoption of an ordinance authorizing, there's no Z there, the levy of a special tax within the city of Oceanside Community Facilities District Number 2022-1, Public Safety Service. Is there a motion to?
Adopt.
Adopt? Motion to adopt? Okay, second? Thank you. Please title.
Thank you. This is the second reading, an adoption of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Oceanside, California, acting in its capacity as the legislative body of City of Oceanside Community Facility District Number 2022-1, Public Safety Services, authorizing the levy of special taxes.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Item number 28, this is adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 14(c) of the Oceanside City Code to establish revised inclusionary housing regulations. This is the item that I meant to vote no on, at least to the ordinance as well as the resolution. So I will be definitely, voting no on this one, okay?
Move adoption.
There's a motion to adopt. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
There is no, actually, there is, there is one. Caught up on me there. We do have one speaker registered, Inez Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, my name is Inez Williams, and I'm the chair of the City of Oceanside Housing Commission. And so last week, this came before, well, December 7th, this came before the council, but we only discussed the inclusionary housing fee from the, at the direction of the Housing Commission, which was to raise that fee to $25. That wasn't the consent of the council, but there was more that went along with that proposal. And so I would like to speak on that and read the entire proposal that the Housing Commission had made at that time. If you don't have it in front of you, go back and look at the notes. We had a meeting, the Housing Commission had a meeting on October 25th, and at that time, a motion was approved, 5-0, that we wanted to raise the inclusionary fee to $25 per square foot, as well as we wanted to raise the time to 99 years as opposed to 55 years. And so that's going to be coming before you on this as well. The terms, and when I say the times, it's the terms of affordability, to make that in appropriate English, the terms of affordability. So as it stands right now, the way that this is written is that it will be affordable for 55 years, and then after 55 years, it goes to market rate. And I'm thinking, 55 years from today would be 27.7, and so we're having issues now, a housing crisis in 2022, and I would imagine in 2077, we're going to have an even worse housing crisis. And so it was at the, the commission had to make the recommendation to take that from 55 years to 99 years. And also, we had also made the recommendation for the council to also consider ADUs, that's accessory drilling units, along with our motion as well. And so I just wanted to speak that to the record tonight, since this is coming back, and you guys are going to be taking a final vote on that. So that is our recommendation. We didn't get to 25 years, but it was 25 years, and then it was to, $25 per square foot is our recommendation, and then it was also the 99 in terms of affordability, and also to consider accessory drilling units, allowing people who already have property here in Oceanside to build on their property to help with the housing issue that we have here in the city. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers on this side.
Thank you. Councilmember Joyce.
Question for staff, did ADUs get added into the new ordinance?
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, yes, we did make a change to allow ADUs to count towards developers' inclusionary housing obligation. That was something that was added towards the tail end of the process.
Okay, thank you. Just some brief remarks, because I know that we are limited in what we can do with this tonight, as I understand it. The fee has been adopted to be $15 at the beginning of the year, and then 20 the following year. I believe that's what council moved on the 7th. So I will not be supporting this as it is currently written, and the main reason is this, we're in homelessness crisis right now, and we should be levying every single thing that we can do to prevent the further encroachment of that crisis, which means everyone that is possibly becoming homeless, we have to be doing everything that we can. I think this 14(c) doesn't get us there. Building affordable housing is the goal of this ordinance. It's stated- the goal of this ordinance, it's stated goal, and I believe there are too many ways to not build it, along with a fee that does not sufficiently encourage that building to happen. So because of those reasons, I won't be supporting it as it is currently written.
Thank you. And I think what I didn't say at the time was, several of the kind of quality policies that we actually passed this past year, and I think even the year before, were basically deleted by some of these policies, which I was pretty unhappy. And I thought that the quality requirements that we had, that we requested, and that I worked really hard to get, were deleted. I think we already have a motion to adopt. Is that, okay, is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second to adopt. Please title the ordinance.
This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside, amending Chapter 14(c) of the Oceanside City Code to establish revised inclusionary housing regulations.
Thank you. Please vote. And I'm doing no this time.
Do you want to redo it again? Yeah, okay. All right, we're going to revote. Yeah. Motion approved, 3-2. Sanchez, Joyce, no.
Thank you, and that's consistent with the minutes, the additional comments in the minutes. Okay. I have, the only thing left is, right, we don't have anything else other than number 26? Because we have a lot of people in the chambers still. Is there anything else that I missed?
No, 26 is the last agenda item left.
Okay, thank you. All right, this was my, this is my item for appointing the deputy mayor. I had actually met with, I don't think you were even sworn in at the time yet, right? Regarding this, because last year, I asked Councilmember Weiss off the dais, and he said yes, and then on the dais, he said no, and insisted that I should appoint Councilmember Rodriguez, and therefore, there was actually no motion made, and therefore, no appointment made. So what we've done is continued from the year previously. So this is actually the third time that I'm not able to appoint a deputy mayor. I understand that there was some discussion with the city attorney. There are, we do have policies, policies are that, they're just policies. It doesn't mean that if you violate a policy, you know, you're damned forever, kind of a thing. There is a policy that we should be, we should bring these forward, the first meeting in December. First meeting in December, we didn't even have the results yet certified by the registrar voters regarding the elections. So while we did bring the regional, and I did bring the regional forward, and trying to find a compromise, because I knew that there were certain things that, you know, that council would not allow me to do, I don't understand, frankly, why we can't get a rotation out of this. Deputy mayor is not, you know, you don't get elected to deputy mayor. It is really ceremonial, and in fact, you know, I'm really, really, really thankful that I have been able, in the last two years that I've been mayor, I've not had to ask for assistance from a person who, you know, that is, has that title deputy mayor. And that is what it is. If I can't make it, you know, and there are a lot of conflicts, but I've been able to work out within the community, the time to be able to get to all my commitments as a mayor. I know it is the mayor, you know, the position who occupies the mayor, who's very important to this community, and I'm just so excited. I actually, I'm very happy to be kind of a cheerleader for our city, and go to, you know, small events, large events, whatever it is. But I just can't get to appoint a deputy mayor, and, which makes it difficult, because there are other things I'd like to do. So having said that, I did ask Mr. Robinson to be the deputy mayor, and he said he'd think about it. It was actually a larger conversation. And then he said no, he didn't want to be deputy mayor. So I am taking this off, but I have to say that this is the second year that I do not have a deputy mayor that I can work with. So it's unfortunate. All right. Then, before we adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting at 3:30 on Wednesday, January 11th, we have had a request, this is, in fact, the anniversary that we all stopped to consider of the death of two of our police officers, Officer Tony Sapatella and Officer Dan Besant, Officer Besant, who in fact was going to be the community police, you know, the first community police officer to serve, whose dad was with Oceanside Unified, and were just very, very committed, he was very, very committed to the community. So we are going to be taking some time to consider, you know, to think about, these two officers gave their lives in the line of duty to our city, and who I think we all, there was a memorial yesterday, and a request by our police department to, you know, wherever you were at 6:30, to take a moment to take some time to think about, you know, these two officers, and what they mean to our community, meant to our community, and mean, continue to mean to our community and to our police department on that. But I do also want to wish everyone, this is, this is a really happy time for some people, you know, in terms of celebrations of, you know, the holidays, Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and all the other things. But it's also, sometimes it's a sad time for people. This is when we have the highest suicide rates, and so just want to suggest that you reach out to family members and friends, and I do wish you all a happy and safe holiday season. And on that, please rise, as we have a moment to remember, Officers Tony Sapatella, Anthony Sapatella, and Dan Besant. Thank you. Meeting adjourned to January 11th, 2023. Happy New Year. Meeting adjourned to January 11th, 2023. Happy New Year.